Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Stallings with Tarrant County. On behalf of Precinct 4, I would like to welcome you to this public hearing event. Just wanted to, I'm going to do a little housekeeping here so everyone's aware. So first of all, thank you for attending. If anyone in the audience requires any sort of translation services, Spanish, Vietnamese, American Sign Language, please notify staff. You can notify me or someone in the back will be happy to assist with those needs. Can you, okay. Okay, is this, is this better? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Okay, so to repeat that, if anyone has any translation service needs, please notify staff. We're happy to provide those services in Spanish, Vietnamese, American Sign Language. We can assist with those. Just notify us and we will be happy to help. Okay, a little background on the potential for redistricting. So on April the 2nd of this year, the Tarrant County Commissioners' Court approved an agreement with the Public Interest Legal Foundation to provide legal guidance and consultation on the possibility of redistricting modifications for the Commissioners' district boundaries in preparation for the 2026 primary and general elections. At the back are some materials that if you did not receive on the way in, you can feel free to pick those up. We have maps over here on your right, and we also have handheld maps that you can take with you to your table if you would like to review those. Additionally, there's a QR code right outside the door that you can scan, and it will take you to the website that will allow you to see the different maps here, the current map and the proposed redistricting maps for 2026. During this hearing, members of the public will be given the opportunity to provide input regarding the proposed map options, so that's why we're here tonight. Anyone who wishes to speak, please sign, complete and sign and submit a form at the back table back here. Megan is waving her hand if you haven't already done that. Please see Megan. She will get you all signed up, and you'll be in the queue to speak. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes, so when you come up to speak, if you have signed up, there is a timer over here to your speaker's right. You will see that timer countdown, and that will be a three-minute countdown that we will have there. For those who wish not to speak publicly, you can also submit a written comment. And again, that will be back here with Megan. You can fill out that form, and your comments will be recorded and submitted into record. And members of the comment, members of the public will also have opportunities to comment at a later date. May the 20th will be our next court date. You can certainly come there, and if you live in a different precinct, you can certainly go to those public hearing meetings as well. So we will begin calling names, and the first speaker will be...
Perla Bohorkes.
My name is Perla Bohorkes. I am a resident in Precinct 4, so Manny Ramirez should represent me and my wishes instead of this nonpartisan organization. I spent my Mother's Day weekend reading legal briefs. I don't know if you guys know how fun those are, but I noticed that the Public Interest Legal Foundation, all they do is copy and paste, copy and paste, copy and paste their argument throughout all 50 states in the United States. They are costing taxpayer funds or taxpayer people so much money because they are mingling and meddling in tons and tons of states and counties. So I'm just going to list off a couple of the cases that they have lost recently, and some that are pending in 2025. So as of right now, PILF, I'll say from now on, they actually represent Trump and MAGA in his executive order to end birthright citizenship. That's not nonpartisan, but here we are. They also represent John Doe in a Ku Klux Klan violation. Currently, that case is pending. They also represent partisan gerrymandering, voter role purges, Voting Rights Act violations, Election Day ballot cure bans. They have gone to, let me just say, Texas, Oregon, Alabama, Pennsylvania, Missouri, New York, Nevada, Wisconsin, Michigan, California, Colorado, Kansas, Nevada. They keep filing these cases in all the different districts, and they are wasting so much money. When we went to Commissioners' Court and we told them, hey, we don't need this redistricting yet, they didn't listen. They moved forward, and they already wasted $30,000 of our taxpayer funds. That's already wasted. But you know what? I would be happy to waste those $30,000 to just stop what we're doing right now versus all the lawsuits that are coming, because they're coming. These people have some cases pending from 2021. These counties, cities, states are wasting money to defend themselves and their neighbors and their employees and their commissioners and their states so that this company, PILF, doesn't come in and start ravaging what we've built over centuries, I want to say. I was born in Oklahoma and raised in Dodge City, Kansas. I am as conservative as they come. I love my neighbors. I try to do anything to help my community, but guess what? I'm also watching how much things cost. We are not being conservative right now. So Manny Ramirez, I wish you were here, but I know you crusade being a conservative man. You are not being conservative if you agree to move forward with this racial gerrymandering. This is racial gerrymandering in 2025. And all these lawsuits, if you guys read it, they try to say partisan gerrymandering, partisan gerrymandering. This is racial. This is not partisan gerrymandering. We are not talking Republican. We are not talking Democrats. We are talking about black and brown voters are being disenfranchised here in Tarrant County in 2025 because of Tim O'Hare and his racist agenda. He has been documented to be racist, so I don't care who says it here. He was, he got a lawsuit in Flower Mound for discriminating against immigrants because he didn't want to rent to them. And so he caught a lawsuit because that's unconstitutional. And I know right now, we're talking about the Constitution of Texas and of the United States, and nobody cares, but the Constitution matters. And if it's unconstitutional, we should not be moving forward. It is illegal and unconstitutional to gerrymander with racial gerrymandering agenda.
Okay, next up is Ben Maples.
There's not a whole lot for me to say that hadn't already been said. It's racially motivated. They're trying to dilute the vote for Alyssa Simmons, who's already been voted in by her One thing that troubles me is that Manny chose the outskirts of his precinct to even have this meeting. It's almost Parker County that I like to spell with three K's. So why he did that is evidence right there that this is racially motivated. It upsets me that people that I care about are being marginalized and basically told that we don't care about you. And I'm not for it. I'm for keeping the precincts just the way they are. Next census, then we'll look at it again, just like we did last time. It's that simple. Guess what? Doesn't cost any more money. Thank you.
Brenda Cornish.
Can you hear me? Okay. I live in Precinct 4, and my friend and I drove about an hour to get here because Commissioner Ramirez decided to have it out in Azul, and because of the traffic, I really, really am disappointed that Commissioner Ramirez is apparently not present. I speak in favor of leaving the current lines intact until the next census, because redistricting now is clearly so costly in time, money, and integrity, and it is so divisive. I watched the video of PILF, maybe I'll call him Pilfer because it's just irresistible, but I watched the video of the Pilfer agent. I watched him tell the public and the Commissioners' Court at the meeting they held a week ago or so that the five maps was the result of the input of the four Commissioners and the county judge, that each map, he actually said something to this effect, that each map represented the input of a different Commissioner and the county judge. I don't know. I assume the man was simply mistaken, but it was not true. It was a complete fabrication. And when I talk about integrity, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. We can't let our public officials get away with letting that kind of falsity slide. And not a Commissioner said a word when the man from Pilfer made that misrepresentation. Some of us are hungry for a countywide leader who is not divisive and who pays attention to all of the public, not just to the right wing of the Republican Party. And until he elected not to show up today, I had kind of, and I hope I still can, County Commissioner Ramirez as possibly one of those who has the courage and the intellect to be a countywide representative. I was impressed when he voted against the proposal to shut down so many polling places. I was quite impressed. And we need a countywide leader who is not just the arm of one party or the other party. In summary, it takes wisdom to decide when you've started down the wrong track, and it takes extreme courage to pull the plug on an idea that you once promoted. It isn't too late. All we've wasted up to this point is $30,000, and Pilfer might even give some of that money back just to get the job in five years. If just one of the Commissioners who voted for this bad idea would step up with the courage to say, okay, never mind, it's a bad idea, that's what needs to happen.
I currently live in what? Okay. I'm Marilyn Gresham, and I currently live in what, with the current map is the third, but when the new one comes, I'll be in the four. I too drove an hour to get here without AC, but I'll tell you, I do support, I'd support option one. Thank you.
Lori Leath.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Leath. I'm a resident of, oh, let me put on my old lady eyes first because I can't see. As a resident, active voter, and a lifelong Republican of Tarrant County, I want to say, I want to make sure you understand that I'm a Republican because I am opposed to the redistricting specifically of option one. The only time a change like this should be considered would be for the good of the citizens of this county. There is nothing about the redistricting that benefits the citizens, only the politicians that govern us. They have admittedly stated the reason for this redistribution is to increase the Republican voter base in certain areas of the county. This is unacceptable. We did not elect the five of them to play politics. We elected them to advocate and better the lives of the citizens of this county. Why should an elderly citizen living in Lakeside have to drive all the way to Arlington if he or she needs to meet with the Commissioner? Instead of the five to 10 minutes it takes them now to drive through Lake Worth where they literally pass the J.D. Johnson sub courthouse, which offices the Commissioner of Precinct 4, as an inconvenience where they are not properly being represented by someone that is on the other side of the county? If they were here tonight, I would tell them, shame on you. If they think that them or their party are underrepresented in an area, that is the candidate's sole responsibility to go to that said area to sway the voters to their side. It is not the duty of either party to pad an area with their party or their own political gain. A voter's mind can be changed if they feel a candidate is aligned to their belief. If you doubt that this is possible, think about civil rights activist Leo Terrell. He was a very staunch Democrat for many years, and he is now a very proud Republican. My opinion is this: I don't believe that this is racially motivated, as everybody seems to think. I believe it is very politically motivated. I think we need to stop saying racial, 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 and start thinking political, 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 and start behaving like we are the United States of America, and stop acting like we are the divided states of America, and start having our voices heard as one and holding our politicians responsible for the job that they were elected to do. Thank you for your time.
Byron Griffith.
I'm Byron Griffith, member of Precinct 4, also a member of the Broadway Baptist Church Justice Committee, although my comments today are my own. Hello, testing, one, two, three. Thank you. Okay. Here, I'll try that again. Byron Griffith, member of Precinct 4, member of Broadway Baptist Committee, Justice Committee, Broadway Baptist Church Justice Committee, here to represent a community of faith and stand against what is quite transparently a racial gerrymander. Plain and simple, the demographic data have been made available, interestingly, not by the court or any Commissioner, but by a private citizen, which clearly show it's a racial gerrymander. This is a disgrace to Tarrant County, and I have to say that our committee has actually had some very, very good interactions with Commissioner Ramirez. We also congratulated him for taking a very bold stand for the early voting sites, and we've also had some very positive interactions on getting more transparency around improving conditions at the Tarrant County Jail. I think in general, he's a very principled man who's willing to stand up to his own party. Unfortunately, I don't see so far that same principle in this case. I would like to see it. I wish he were here. I'm disappointed that he's not here. My comments are a little jumbled, but I, I think that's because I didn't know what to expect when I came here. There was no information given about what the format would be, where we'd be allowed to ask questions, who would be here to answer them, and now, basically, it's just another three-minute speech that we could do at Commissioners' Court. That's a disgrace in itself, but I think it's on purpose, and I think it's to make sure that we don't have hard questions, and we don't have Mr. Nixon up here answering the questions that he wouldn't or couldn't answer in court, because I have a long list of them, and I want answers to all of them, because when Commissioner, when Judge O'Hare said that, that he works for the court, Judge O'Hare was wrong. PILF works for me, the taxpayer. In the strict legal sense, yeah, under contract, but in the more important democratic sense, Mr. Nixon works for me. Why isn't he here to answer my very important questions? He's not. In closing, I just urge everyone to speak out, contact everyone you can. Let's bring a stop to this horrible and transparently racist power grab.
Can you hear me? No. I know I need to be closer. Okay, I'm so glad to be here. I think it's really important for me to speak out. It is hard for me to do this, but I know in my heart that's what I need to be doing. I'm Jeanne Robinson, and I have lived in District 4 for 25 years. Before I got here and saw that Manny was not here, I was planning to say that I appreciate that Manny Ramirez is my Commissioner, because he has grown up in this community, Saginaw, not Azul. He understands working for a living, and he has experience in law enforcement. What I know of him is that he respects people, he respects the laws of the county, state, and country. The current district map maintains a fair and equitable distribution of the Tarrant County citizens. As a taxpayer of this county, I am appalled at the fiscal irresponsibility of spending $30,000 on unnecessary legal fees to manipulate the current district lines to stop representation of local taxpayers. These maps were not created by the community, and the citizens have the right to be heard. There has not been a significant change in the population to warrant any redistricting at this time. Mr. Ramirez, wherever you may be, as a representative on, my representative on the Tarrant County Commissioners' Court, I ask you to vote for the citizens of Tarrant County and reject the unconstitutional and racially gerrymandered maps. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Julie Griffin, and I live in Precinct 1, but one of the proposed maps does put me in Precinct 4. I echo and affirm the comments of my fellow citizens who are upset about the process here, and Mr. Ramirez, I hope you do listen on video to all of our comments. The heart of these proposed maps is a racially-based gerrymander in violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. By the visual in particular, as you can see right there, and data that goes with the PILF-proposed map number one, especially compared to the current map, it is obvious that PILF has cracked the voting age, Black, Hispanic, and Asian populations out of Precinct 2, and packed them mostly into Precinct 1, with some fractured off to white majority Precinct 3. U.S. Census American Community Survey data reflects current voting age populations of Precinct 2 as 45.9% white, 24.1% black, 20.6% Hispanic, and 9.4% Asian Other, which in PILF number 1 changes to 62.3% white, a 17% increase; 15.1% black, a 9% decrease; 17.4% Hispanic, 5.2% Asian Other. Meanwhile, PILF number 1 has packed Precinct 1 down to 28.4% white from 39.4 and up to 36.8% black from 30.3. The proposed maps essentially move far west white Fort Worth neighborhoods, such as Benbrook, eastward all the way to Arlington, and redistribute black Arlington and Mansfield neighborhoods to pack Precinct 1, plus spread some of the cracking of black neighborhoods from Precinct 2 into Precinct 3. This is an incredible and blatantly racial division of communities historically compact and contiguous. I note that the two majority-white northern precincts retain their compact, contiguous, geographical, historical nature in all the proposed maps, while the two African-American-represented precincts are cut up into smithereens in all the proposed maps. This has not been a necessary undertaking, as people have pointed out, being midway between the accurate data collection process of the census-taking and the current map being the same one ratified in 2021 by the Commissioners' Court. There is no evidence that population growth has materially imbalanced the population numbers of the four districts. Precincts, if precincts 4 and 2 are the fastest-growing precincts still, why is majority-white Precinct 4 still intact as a compact piece while African-American-represented Precinct 2 is put through a shutter? I just want to say, please keep the current map and end the contract with PILF. This is totally unnecessary and wasteful. Thank you.
So I, like many others here, expected people to be here to answer my questions. I'm really disappointed that they're not. I agree with pretty much everything everyone has said. These maps look ridiculous. I mean, how could you say that this is fair redistricting? It's not. So I just want Manny Ramirez to know, I'm really disappointed you weren't here tonight, and I hope that you will listen to us and not agree to this, because it's bullshit.
My name is Doreen Geiger, and I live in this district. Let's face it, this redistricting effort is about racial gerrymandering to remove a female Black member from this court. The current map, based on the data from 2021 for the Commissioners' Court, has almost the same number of residents in each of the four precincts. Commissioners Miles and Kraus have a few, too few, residents, and Commissioners Ramirez and Simmons have a few too many. But the overall deviation is just 1.79%. This is far below the 10% that is legally requires a redistricting. The time to redistrict this county will be in 2031, after the 2030 census data is completed. I called North Central Council of Churches, Council of Governments to get updated data, but the total estimated Tarrant County population will not be released until the end of this month, and it will not produce data by the four precincts. Please keep the current maps that we have and make sure they are approved until the next census is over and the data provides what we need for redistricting. Thank you.
Rebecca Delmone.
Okay. The, maybe not. The practice of gerrymandering has been defined as politicians picking their voters instead of voters picking their politicians. Interestingly enough, in Tarrant County, Phil Sarls, Tim O'Hare, Sheriff Wayborn, lost in precincts 1 and 2. Matt Kraus easily won his overwhelming white district. Commissioner Ramirez, with all due respect, the majority of your supporters, I thought he was going to be here, are white, and you are not the candidate of choice for Hispanics. It appears you want to represent people who you can count on to serve your aspirations rather than you serving theirs. Tarrant County is now a majority-minority county and rapidly growing accordingly. Blacks and Hispanics have grown to represent 55.9% of the total population Blacks and Hispanics have grown to represent 55.9% of the total population. They have also increased by 220,000 persons just in the past few years. In contrast, the white population fell by 42 point, fell by 42.9% and decreased by over 32,000 persons. The new maps ordered by Judge O'Hare grossly misrepresent the racial realities that have emerged and are determining the future demographic makeup of our county. Paid for by Tarrant County taxpayers, Judge O'Hare retained the Public Interest Legal Foundation over the objections of Commissioners Miles and Simmons. This group is a MAGA-created special interest group established to attack minority voting rights through courts. Retaining this firm alone exposes O'Hare's mid-decade redistricting as an act of intentional and racial discrimination and insurance against the will of the emerging minority-majority. If he can redraw the maps, he will ensure racial minorities will not dominate politics in the immediate future or thereafter as the politicians will have already selected their voters.
Walter Horton?
I live in Precinct Three. I'm an eighth-generation Texan. And I, gonna make it short because you guys have said what, you guys have said what I would like to say better than I could have and I won't repeat it much. I find, if you've got this page here, if you look at his map, okay, we've got five proposed maps. And then on the top left up here, the election results in 2024. If you'll put them, if you can overlay the election results over the maps and they fit perfectly, almost perfectly. And if you've got any doubt about it, I mean, how could you have doubt? This is, this is a illegal racial gerrymander. And I'm against it. I think we ought to leave the districts the way they are, the precincts the way they are. Thank you.
Linda Hanrady?
Hi, I'm Linda Hanrady. Can't hear me? Okay. I'm Linda Hanrady and I live in Precinct Four. And I voted for Manny Ramirez because I thought he was the best candidate. I don't have, I certainly don't think so now. We had to drive 25 miles and it took us almost an hour to get here and he isn't even here. And what does that show you? That Republicans don't show up to public meetings. But they use their power to disenfranchise us. And yes, it's racial gerrymandering, but it is also political gerrymandering. It's both. And I am tired of it. Our state is, our county is totally gerrymandered, so we have very little representation. I have none. There's, because part of a republic is that we choose our representatives. In Tarrant County, our representatives choose us. And now for the county to pull this kind of thing is abhorrent. So please, I don't know what we can do about it because the consultant said right in front of us, well, three, it was, the vote was three to two to do this and we are going to do it. But if anybody has ideas, I'd be appreciative. Thank you.
Sheila Thornburg?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm a little bit taller. Okay, thank you. I just want to start off by saying, you know, I really appreciate, I appreciate if these meetings can be maintained in a civil manner. Everyone in this country has a right to freedom of speech, whether we agree with them or not. Most recently, I had a dear friend, a neighbor of mine, who was heckled, heckled and harassed as she left another public meeting. There's no place for that in our society. It just should not happen. That said, I'm going to give full disclosure. I am a conservative. I do vote conservatively. I have been a Senate delegate to the GLP Convention in 2022 and 2024. I volunteered during our elections. I worked my precinct chair. I support certain candidates. And I work my precinct on voting day. That said, I want to say that I also appreciate Commissioner Ramirez and his staff. I don't think any of us realize all the tasks and all the priorities that they have on their calendar. Many have talked this evening about the location of the meeting. Well, if you look at our current district, this location is about as close to being in the center of the meeting as of the district as you can get. And there are other six other meeting times and locations where people can go there if it's closer to them. You don't have to go to the meeting that's just in your district. So I, because I live in this district and love this district and I voted for Commissioner Ramirez and I will vote for him again, I don't want to move out of this district. I don't want to be moved out of it. There are too many good things that are going on in our district. Commissioner Ramirez and his staff have a history of supporting our community and the surrounding areas of District Four. While I understand at various times in history that redistricting is required, I agree that the next census is the most opportune time to make that happen. Other reasons, I can't support particularly Option One because that moves us out of the district and into a district that would otherwise have different priorities, which is okay for them, but not necessarily what I might be focused on for my family and my neighborhood. I am retired from a corporate career as an executive in the southeast part of Tarrant County. I am retired from a corporate career in the southeast part of Tarrant County. I know people who live in District Two. I know what their priorities are and what they want for their communities and their challenges and priorities are different than ours. So for that reason, I would not want to move into that district because our priorities would go to the bottom. I also serve on a committee that works to preserve our natural resources and our environment. And to move me out of this district would give me, I wouldn't be part of that group anymore. And I believe I bring value.
Ms. Thornburg? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Oliver?
Check, one, two, check, check. Sorry, y'all, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay? All right. My name is Dana Oliver. I've been a resident of Asal for 25 years and a resident of Tarrant County for 34 years. I lived in the north, northern part of Tarrant County for eight and a half and we moved out here to this lovely jewel in Tarrant County and I love it so much. Asal has changed in 25 years. We have had a surge of all colors of races in Asal and I love it. Whoever said the Parker with the KKK, I am so disappointed in you. That is the most racist comment I've heard. Anyway, we've had a surge of growth in Tarrant County, period. We haven't had a drawing of the lines for the Commissioners Court race in particular in over 15 years. We're past the census. The census was 2020. This is the time for the county commissioner lines to be redrawn. It makes sense. We've had other lines drawn, the JP, different areas, senatorial, congressional, all of that. Well, it's their turn. And that's just how it is. We have a surge of growth everywhere in Tarrant County. Just in, let's see, from 2010 to 2020, 16%. That's a lot of people. We have a growth of, just from 2020 to 23, just in Fort Worth, there were 54,000 people. That's a lot of people. We have families coming in every day to this county because people want to live here. It is the second, well, it used to be the second, it might be the first now, most conservative county in the nation. I don't know if you realize that, but we are. Well, you can boo, boo hoo, that's fine. But we are, by our elected officials, we have the most conservative county in the country because of population growth. That's the only time we ever redistrict is population growth. And it is not racially motivated because people move to different areas all across the county. If you think it's racially motivated, I feel bad for you. Feel sorry for you because you're believing a lie and that's just the way it is. Okay? I love this area. I served as election judge. I've been precinct chair. I've been in party politics for 30 years. I've been a delegate to the conventions for, oh my gosh, 30 years. I've served, I've met with elected officials, I speak at Commissioners Courts. I do all that stuff. And I've seen the growth, I've seen the difference. And you know what? I'm going to stop talking because my time is up. Y'all have a great day.
Geraldine Jackie Cox?
My name is Geraldine Jackie Cox. I live in, can you hear me? Now you can hear me? All right. I live in Precinct One. I want to say that it is very important that we are here to talk to one another today. I am really sorry Commissioner Ramirez is not here to hear us because he shows us less than the full respect that we as voters deserve by not even coming out to hear us. I, please don't interrupt me. But Ms., Ms. Oliver, what I want you to know is the map drawing that goes forward now does not reflect the changes in the racial, in the population of the county. They are doing the maps for 20, the new maps based on 2021 census data. They're not changing the maps on a basis of the new population. They're changing the maps on the basis of trying to marginalize and reduce the voting power of minorities by drawing lines that divide minority communities so that they can't vote for the same candidates. That's what gerrymandering is about. It's called cracking and packing. Many minority voters are being taken out of Precinct Two, which is the Arlington precinct and one of the most diverse cities in the country. And they're putting them into the precinct of Commissioner Miles, which is already heavily minority. And by reducing the minority population that votes with Arlington and packing it into my precinct, they're depriving the people of Arlington of electing the people they would have chosen. And it isn't just racial. It's also about values. Because I want things that Commissioner Miles wants and that Commissioner Simmons wants. I want better mental health care. I want better funding for JPS Health System. I want more equity in the way the jails are run. I want a lot of things that are economic issues rather than racial issues. But if I have a distribution of voting people who vote minority interests, they turn out to represent my interests better than the deep blue, blue, blue parts of the precincts that they want to put into the new maps. So. I'm just going to finally finish. We need this input. And where the hell, pardon me, where is Mr. Ramirez?
Robert Van?
Testing, we, okay. Boy, are you lucky tonight because I wrote up a speech for this thing and I went off and left it at home. So you're all set. I agree with the great majority of what's been said tonight. I want to stay with the current map that we have right now until it's time we do another census and it's time for another redrawing. Yes, with, a Republican administration back in 2000, 2001, did, what was it, 2020, I'm sorry, did a whole study. They went through a whole big process and the public was very involved in whether to redraw the maps and how to, how to draw them. And they decided, this Republican administration in the county, decided to leave it the way it was because it was really well-balanced and representing the people the way they should have been represented. So I think, let's wait until another census and then we can see about whether there needs to be some adjustment. But for the time being, it's the wrong time. And you talk about the $30,000 that's already been allocated to this right-wing firm to do this job. That's just a drop in the bucket is what's going to happen. The whole process is going to be costly and then there are going to be lawsuits upon lawsuits after this is all over. And it's going to cost the people of Tarrant County a fortune. So let's get rid of this, let our autocratic judge just sit up there and deal with the situation the way it is. And eventually, maybe we can get that guy out of the, out of that office and maybe we can put somebody in that'll, that'll be a little more balanced. Thank you.
Kavanaugh Welch?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kavanaugh Welch. I'm a resident of District Four. I am not a native Texan, but I moved here six years ago and I really enjoy the place. I didn't really come with the intention of speaking tonight. I really wanted to have some questions answered and like many of you, I'm disappointed that our commissioner isn't here to answer them. But maybe I'll pose them to you for something to think about as I continue to look for answers. My main question is, why are we doing this? I mean, I know, we know really why we're doing this, but why are we doing this? And then, are these really the options they gave us? Do these look like options to you? I mean, I, I want our money back. I would like someone to tell me, what is the difference between Option Two through Five? There is none. So until I get, I haven't heard a good answer yet as to why we're doing this, why we even spent the $30,000 and why we're going to spend so much more on this. So I think that everyone should think about that as they vote on these options and I don't think it's worth it. Thank you. Thank you.
Chris Taggett.
That's better, right? All right. This would be way cooler if I had charts, but I don't. But the reality is, the only data that we got from the maps that the court released was the political outcomes, right? Republican, Democrat. That's not what the story is as we're talking about it. Now, we also have to understand, the courts have said, you can politically gerrymander, but you cannot racially gerrymander. You have to look at the story behind Tarrant County and the demographics in Tarrant County to understand the real story. Tarrant County, in the 2020 census data, is 57% minority. 57% across the entire county. Well, if you look at the Hispanic percent of population in Precinct 1 today, in the current map, it's 30.1%. In any of the options presented, it goes to 34.9 at the lowest point. So moving more Hispanic votes into Precinct 1. The black percent of population in Precinct 1 is currently 29.7. There is nothing less than 32.9 in the five options, so moving more black voices into Precinct 1. The Asian percent of population in Precinct 1 is currently 4.6, nothing less than 6.1 in the options, so moving more Asian percent of the, or Asian voices into that precinct. When you look at all minorities in Precinct 1, it's currently 66%. In any of the five options, there is nothing less than 77%. They are packing that district. When you look at the white percent of the population in Precinct 1, it's 34.4% today. Again, nothing less than 23.3 as we go forward. We have to understand what they're doing in Precinct 2, because that is where the rest of the story is. The white percent of population in Precinct 2 currently is 40.1%. It is a second minority-majority district. There is no option that takes it less than 49.2, making it look almost identical to Precinct 4. When you look at the average change across the full set of the precincts, Precinct 1 sees no less than 12% increase in minority population. Precinct 2 goes down 11.5. 3 and 4 see no negligible change. This is all about removing voices in communities from Precinct 2 and forcing them into Precinct 1. The current court does not want to hear two voices from minority communities advocating on the court, so they are drawing the lines to ensure they don't have to. Look, this whole change is rooted in Christian nationalism. These people aren't leaders, they're part of the root of the rot impacting our country, and if it happens here and it's successful, they will take this all across the state, all across the country. We have to say no.
Efrain Corian.
What's going on, beautiful people? Can you hear me? Cool. Uh, well, going after Chris with all the numbers, I guess I'll kind of stick a little bit more with story here. Guys, there's no judge here, there's no Commissioner, they both make over $200,000 a year to do their job. They would be in the top 2% of salary-based people in their precinct, in their county, and they're not here showing up for us. We have maps that unfortunately Chris has done more work than. I mean, there's no other information. There's nothing else that we got, we're speaking in an echo chamber with none of them here. This is an example of how we really need to do something as we continue to come up to earlier Commissioner races. We're 2.1 million people in our county. If we were our own county, we would be bigger than, I mean, if our own state, we'd be bigger than 16 states. And a man is trying to change our power in less than two months. I think this is very important for us to speak about. I'm 35 years old, a Latino resident here in Texas, and that is the average, the median age of a Tarrant County resident, and a minority resident is the population we're talking about here, and we're not in this room, where clearly, they don't want us on that, on the judge's court, and these are the things we have to be standing up for. It's vitally important. None of this is in another language. So even to get the other people here to speak up in their voices, my neighbors all speak Spanish. This is a vital, like disgrace to race and the representation of what Texas is gonna be. I'm gonna end with this, there's an Economist magazine, and it was an article about Texas. From 2010 to 2020, the number of white Texans under the age of 18 fell by 43%. But the overall number of under-18s grew by 413,000 here in Texas. Why are we giving Judge three white majority seats where they get more of the voice? This is gonna impact in decades. We saw what happened at Keller ISD. Things like that is coming at a bigger scale, and we all need to make sure our neighbors and people around us start waking up. Thank you.
Aaron James.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to let y'all all know, in case you didn't, Trump won this past November with an increase in the BIPOC population. So this idea that it's racial, you know, is just a fallacy, so you ought to just forget that. You know, I know that it's easier to keep people divided that way if we continue to look at people's color, but this is political. And I'll tell you another thing, any party that is okay for cutting off body parts and moving them around on children is not a party that anybody can get behind. So if you're Democrat, I want to give you the opportunity, the Republican Party does welcome you with open arms, because we're the party of common sense. This is political, y'all, it's not racial. But if you want to make it racial, I mean, I guess that makes headlines and continues to, you know, fuel the fire, but I mean, what we're seeing right now is political. And so we have an opportunity to work together or continue the racial divide. And it's quite obvious what you guys like. So, the map, I think we ought to take it from north 35 to south 35, west 30 to east 30, and then you have 1, 2, 3, 4, just like that.
Harriet Harrell.
Hi. First of all, I want to say that I am very definitely opposed to this redistricting plan. And I want to say that I understand that the reason Manny Ramirez is not here is that a plane was canceled. He was planning to be here. So, I think it's only fair for us to acknowledge that. And his chief of staff, Tracy Knight, is back there, and I assume, making frantic notes. We're counting on you, Tracy. So here are the reasons I am opposed to this plan. First, it is not needed. In 2021, four years ago, a process was carried out, and the court unanimously approved that we keep the districts as they are now. Nonetheless, three of our court members did vote to hire PILF, which, as you have heard, has a well-earned reputation for representing clients who are willfully illegally violating the Voting Rights Act. They have presented five maps. I don't know why, because they have given zero information about why. Any one of those maps is any better than what we have now. Do we just like the color arrangement? There's been zero reason for this, nor is there any reason to explain why one is different from another. Zero information on population distribution, ethnicity, age, city limits, public county facilities, as they are distributed among those five. We know nothing, except that if you look carefully at the voting pattern, at the distribution of voting populations, you can see why these maps are drawn consistently with Precinct 1 and 2 totally changed and arranged so that the vast majority of the black voting population is in Precinct 1, most of it taken out of Precinct 2. I have maps, and if you can't see them well, I will be here afterwards and happy for you to come look at them up close, because here's what they show. This is the, this is the current precinct arrangement. And if you look at, thank you so much, look at the green, you can see that's black voting population. This is the arrangement that they are proposing, and you can see that the black voting population is now all in Precinct 1. This, which used to be Precinct 2, is now 1. And Precinct 2 is anglo, 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 anglo. So come and look, it is blatant. Thank you.
Dixie Davis.
Hello, can you hear me? All right, good. I just want to say thank you to the staff for being here tonight. I live in Precinct 3, that's Matt Kraus. Specifically, I live in Keller ISD. And y'all may have heard about the recent issues this spring in Keller ISD, where our school board tried to split our district apart. Had that plan to split moved forward, it would have gone to the County Commissioners Court to decide whether or not we, the people, could vote on that split, whether we could have a say in our own future. This spring, the only Commissioner who showed up to a Keller School Board meeting to demand the people get a vote was Alyssa Simmons. She forced the Commissioners Court to discuss the issue in an open meeting, which even the school board had trouble doing. She doesn't even represent our district, our school district. She saw injustice happening, and she stood up against it, and that's why I am here now. It is no coincidence that Matt Kraus's precinct, Precinct 3, remains the most intact of all the proposed maps, the safest of all the precincts, and that in every proposed map, Simmons's precinct is unrecognizable. Matt Kraus gets the safe district, and Arlington gets split in two. If the purpose of this redistricting is to balance the population between precincts, then that can easily be done by shifting the boundaries here and there, but this is obviously not what's happening. This is about maintaining political power. We in Keller ISD know all about that. And as we've seen in May's elections, Keller ISD remembers who stood with us when it mattered most, and we will not stand for blatant political games that disenfranchise thousands of voters. Thank you.
Amy Super.
I'm a low talker, let me know if you can't hear. Can hear? Okay. You want to know how to disenfranchise voters? Don't show up. I have in my little hands, my hot little hands here, the election reconciliation statement from your municipal elections. You have 1.2233548 registered voters in this county? Less than 9% of them bother to show up and vote. That's how you disenfranchise a community, you don't show up. Now, before you get excited about this, because not too many are gonna clap, based on what my opinion is on this subject matter, I'm for redistricting. And I'll tell you why. I find it impossible to believe that with over 400,000 people moving into Tarrant County since the last time we redistricted, somehow, they all magically got together and decided to evenly distribute themselves among Tarrant County. How is that possible? I think it's not possible. Somebody talked about getting their money back for this study, let's get our money back from the last study, or at least produce the last study. I've heard numbers from the last study, but I haven't been able to get anyone to show me that report that shows that it's real little. I need you to quit talking over other people. No, sir. Rude. Okay? Right now, if you look at the map, I'm in the super squiggly area of District 4. You see the little area that kind of worms itself down and does all these weird little things? I've got people north of me, west of me, south of me, in precinct, in a different precinct. And there I am, right in the middle of all that. So I am in support of being, going with map number one. That would allow me to have a little bit more of a sense of community, because guess what? I don't need to have the same color of skin as the person who's representing me to do so. If I hear one more person get up here and make the assumption that you must have the same color of skin to represent someone, or assuming that all people of color must be represented by one party rather than another to be properly represented, that's racist. Thank you.
Nan Terry.
Hi, I'm Nan Terry. I am a resident of this precinct. I've been a resident of Tarrant County since 1999. I'm a native Texan, and somewhere in the history, we can claim to be, fight for the War of Independence. What I look around, and I'm amazed at what I don't see. I don't see anything related to the source of data creating these proposed maps. I don't see any background on the demographics of the changes proposed, and I don't really see that we're using anything different from the 2020 census. How old is that now? At least five years? I don't see any information explaining why we're doing this. Who prepared the maps? At the last county Commissioners, there was a discussion, and Nixon came out and said, "I didn't prepare these maps." So who prepared them? There's no authorship on any of the handouts. Is there a legal requirement? How many people are being moved from Precinct 3, 4, 2, what? I mean, I guess 3's staying the same. But why isn't that data being provided? And what are we really getting for our $30,000? And when you don't provide the data, the public is left wondering why, and what are you trying to hide? That being said, I want to keep the current map. What is being proposed, some of them are extremely divisive. I mean, when you have gerrymandering that looks like a snake, I mean, is that really reasonable? It's outrageous that the judge and the Commissioner are out here. I traveled quite a bit. If the meeting was really that important, Manny should have flown back yesterday. Let's keep the current map. I really think this, all these maps are based on 2020 census, but there's no data to tell us where the source of the data is, so we really don't know. One last thing, what is the county gonna do with our public-spoken, and public-spoken and written comments? Will anyone tally our comments, provide a summary to the public, to the Commissioners, to the Judge? What happens to our comments? Thank you.
Janet Mattern.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I think it's great to see so many people interested in civics in Tarrant County. I think it's wonderful. Regardless of what side you're on, the proposed maps are not fair. What criteria were used to generate these maps? I live in precinct 1. Looking at the new options that they're providing, options 1 through 4 don't even have the southwest sub courthouse for precinct 1 in precinct 1. The southwest sub courthouse for all the new maps, except 5, are in precinct 2, as I will be in precinct 2 with all of the new maps. So those maps that don't even have southwest sub courthouse in precinct 1 should not even be considered. Option 5 has another problem. What has happened to Arlington? Arlington will be in the option 5, divided into three different commissioner precincts. The current option has only 2 for Arlington, because that northern edge, the red, is Fort Worth, if you look at the current map. So what were the criteria used to redistrict these maps? I think that looking at redistricting criteria that are supposed to be used, that means you're supposed to make sure you keep your boundaries of your cities and municipalities intact. You keep maintenance facilities and courthouses within the areas they're supposed to be taking care of. And then if you look at what happens to all of these, 1 through 5, as far as precinct 2, who is servicing all those rural roads for precinct 2 in the new maps? Those are all on the southwest side where all the maintenance facilities are for precinct 1 now. So that means you're going to have to redo all the services, all the employees for 1 and 2, to make sure that we have appropriate personnel to do the work of transportation and roads that our county commissioners are supposed to do. So what does that mean? How much more is this going to cost the taxpayers because they want to draw a new map? To me, keep the old maps, save our taxpayer dollars, wait till the next census when you have new numbers that show the actual increase in population.
Stacy Norello.
I have a question. So Manny is not here because he missed a flight or got canceled? What is it? He got canceled? Does he have a phone? Can he FaceTime us? Does he know how to work Zoom? Who works for Manny here? Does he know how to use Zoom? Can anyone answer for me? Okay, so I guess Manny doesn't have a phone. I guess he can't call in. I guess he can't Zoom, or maybe a Teams meeting. I think in the world of technology that we live in, you would think that if you really cared about listening to his constituents, whether you're for redistricting or against, I want all of you to have the opportunity to speak to your representative. Do you not think that you are entitled to at least that, since he is on your payroll? Your tax dollars pay for whatever it is that he's doing, his livelihood. This is what he's supposed to be doing. He's supposed to be here, listening to you all. So if he, for some reason, can't be here, then he needs to find a way to make it happen. I would think that since he has a whole team of people working behind him, maybe y'all could come up with a way that he could still be here to listen to his constituents and actually respond to questions, instead of just having us believe that he's actually going to go back and watch a video of us speaking. Yeah, where is the camera? I would like to do a direct-to-camera right now. Any camera that I can speak into directly? Red phone? Okay, okay. So Alyssa Simmons is here, trying to make this public to everyone. The same commissioner that they are trying to push out of her seat is the only one who is trying to actually be here. And I know she will be at her own town hall. Who knows if Matt Kraus is going to be at his? No clue. So I think it's entirely disrespectful to every single one of y'all in here. And where's PILF? Is PILF here? Where are my PILF people at? Come on. Where you at? Oh, so PILF isn't, oh. I think taxpayer money is also paying for them as well. So they're also not here. Wow. That's so crazy. They're drawing the maps that we're discussing, and they can't even answer a single question that anyone has to present. Are you kidding me? What a slap in the face, what cowardice. I don't care that Manny's flight was canceled. He needs to find a way to be here. So for him not to is extremely cowardly. I think he's a scaredy cat. I think he knows that we are going to fight to not get him reelected, because Tarrant County deserves somebody that is actually going to fight for them and listen to them.
Hunter Griffin.
I am strongly against the redistricting, if you haven't found out by now, by my outbursts earlier. I will say that waste, waste, waste. He's wasting our money. They are now wasting our time, all of our precious time that we all either took off work, away from our kids. I know I took off work to be here, so I'm missing part of my paycheck to be here. Thanks, Manny Ramirez. I'll send a check in the mail, and hopefully they'll reimburse it, just like they did PILF. I'll take the $30,000. That sounds good to me. But yeah, obviously, we know what they're doing here. It's political gerrymandering, it's racial gerrymandering, whatever you want to call it. It's both, because that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to knock out the only black woman that is the actual speaker for the people. She, basically, as you can see, we're in a very red area right now. And it's like, majority people against it, whether if you're Democrat or Republican. It's majority people against it. So I think these are the people who care about this issue, and I think the people have spoken that we don't want this map. There's been less than maybe five people, I think, spoke for the redistricting. So yeah, so don't change the maps, keep them the same.
Reed Bills.
My name is Reed Bills, and I have been a member, a resident in precinct 1 for over 50 years. I'm about to be moved out of my comfort zone and into District 2 because of these maps. I, like a previous speaker, find canceled flight to be fishy. And he should have arranged his schedule so that something like that would not interfere with the most importance of coming here and addressing us. Judge O'Hare has insisted that the justification for redrawing county lines is to even the distribution between the precincts. However, numbers show that the precincts are still in balance. Faced with the likelihood that his smart, Democrat, female, black adversary on the court will win reelection in 2026, Judge O'Hare wants to gerrymander her precinct to dilute or even eliminate her black and brown constituents. The method, as instructed by O'Hare, that his conservative Christian nationalist law firm put together to achieve his goal includes using data from the results of the 2024 election and flipping precincts 1 and 2 so that the incumbent candidate will now be seeking election by a constituency that does not know her and no longer identifies with her. The first tactic violates election laws, and the latter tactic clearly reveals Judge O'Hare's racist intent.
I'm David Hafer. I live in Bend Brook in precinct 1. And I didn't make it here until 6:40, because I had to work today. And trying to get out here from anywhere other than out here is very difficult, because everyone knows what the traffic is like on 199. So there are only four public meetings within the span of about a week. Why is that? Oh, wait a minute, questions. I've got questions, but there are no answers forthcoming, because they don't answer. So there are four public meetings. What's the purpose of a public hearing? It's for your elected officials to hear from us, not for us just to talk to each other. I mean, I'm glad to share this time with you tonight. Thank all of you for being here. But there's so many more people that could have attended, perhaps, if they had this meeting in the beautiful sub courthouse in Lake Worth. I'm concerned about what's going to happen to Bend Brook. If you look at all five of those proposed maps, it takes Bend Brook, about 25,000, and it puts us with pieces of Arlington and Mansfield, 25 to 30 miles away from us. So most of the population's going to be over there. Whoever ends up getting elected over in those areas, are they going to care anything about Bend Brook in the southwest corner of an area that's already also growing like it is up here in the northwest? So to my neighbor who talked about really enjoying being in Azul and the growth that's happening here and wanting to keep it all intact, I'm glad for you. I love this area up here, too. If I didn't live where I live now, I'd probably want to be up here. But what happens in the southern part of the county, it all gets chopped up. Bend Brook with Arlington and Mansfield, which we have nothing in common, and it takes the areas south of us that are still all part of the Fort Worth School District, and it just wraps around. Why? Why are we doing this? What's the purpose of this? As far as I know, the county judge, other than that one statement that he made, hasn't really answered any of these questions. In one of the meetings a few weeks ago, he said to the commissioner on his right, "I don't answer to you." So who does he answer to? Does he answer to Tim Dunn and Ferris Wilks? I think so. He doesn't answer to us. He's not here. None of them are here. If the flight was canceled, he should have expected that. Why would he plan to fly on a day that this is one of the most important things that's happening in his precinct? Where's the county judge? Where is he? Why doesn't he listen to us? He doesn't, because he listens to those two out in West Texas.
Benjamin Swallow.
I'm Ben Swallow, and I used to be a newspaper reporter up in Cook County, and I covered, I used to cover the county commissioners in Cook County, which is for the Gainesville Daily Register. So I became familiar at a young age with county government, and of course, so I follow it in the news. It's unusual to have redistricting in between the census. But nevertheless, precinct boundaries should be proportional, equal in population. The goal is one man, pardon the language, it's historical, one man, one vote, or to update it, one person, one vote. In an urban county where you have a diverse population, you have to group the demographic minorities together to ensure they have representation. We used to have at-large districts, for instance, in Fort Worth. So it would be very difficult for any person of color to get elected to the city council. So they, I don't remember the history of it, but they came up with single-member districts. So now that African-Americans, Latinos, and whites all have representation. Because if you know the history of this state, if you don't fight for your representation, you don't get it. So county commissioners' precincts are the same way. African-Americans have a right to be represented. And now, if they, between them and the Latinos, if they represent nearly half the population, why should they not have two precincts? What is wrong with that? Well, if you want to impose a white, majority, male, Christian leadership on the county, then it's a problem. I'll just stop there. I think everyone here has done a very good job covering the issues, but it just, I'm just fed up with it. Donald Trump lost Tarrant County in 2020. He barely won it in 2024, but he won it by 50.1% of the vote. Half of Tarrant County isn't buying what he's selling. Thank you.
And that is the last speaker we have signed up for tonight, so thank you, everyone, for coming.